I would like to welcome everybody here today, elected representatives, our witnesses, senior public servants, representatives of the third sector and members of the public. Our session today is one of our regular public hearings looking at major issues of public and political concern, and our focus will be on the implementation of the disability and inclusion strategy. Avica Harwood.
Thank you, thank you. If you've been through the chair, I'd just like to acknowledge the fact that during 2014-2015 I chaired what's sort of called the Disability Legislation Group. And I accept, I think in the GDA's comments, there is criticism of that group under which I did it. I fully accept that criticism. One of my greatest regrets during my office in the States was that we were unable to develop or produce a satisfactory conclusion to the issue of the legislation. So I fully acknowledge that criticism and so forth applies to me. I'm delighted now to hear that actually there is a dedicated resource being put into the development of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I mean this is a subject which is not new to members of the Scrutiny Management Committee, and we have considered this history when selecting our panel for today's hearing. On this occasion, we believe that the overriding consideration is that the States has created a scrutiny management committee and entrusted this task to those members which it has nominated to the committee. Therefore, we believe members should participate unless a conflict is established that means it would be inappropriate for them to take part. On this occasion, we believe that no conflict exists and that the previous experience of members adds to the committee's understanding of these issues and does not preclude their involvement. So, our panel today comprises myself, Deputy Chris Green, President of the SMC, Deputy Peter Roffey, the Vice President of the Scrutiny Management Committee, and Avica Harwood. Following this event, the committee will decide whether any further review activity will be commissioned in this area. Turning to the arrangements for today, I can confirm that the Hansard transcript from this proceedings will be published in due course. We have also committed to producing a video capturing the questions and answers during the hearing that will be available via the committee's website. So, can I just ask everybody who has perhaps only mobile devices to ensure that they're on silent please at this stage? It is essential during our session today that the committee is able to hear from our witnesses without any interruption from the public gallery. So, we've got two distinct phases. In the first phase, can I ask for our witnesses to introduce themselves, starting at this end with Deputy Hanson Ruxell, please?
Deputy Hanson Ruxell, and I'm the State's Champion for Disabled Islanders.
Karen Blanchard.
Karen Blanchard, I'm the Executive Director for the Guernsey Disability Alliance.
Aaron Wilkie. I'm a Director of the Guernsey Disability Alliance.
And Rob Harnish. I'm the Vice President of Social Policy for the Guernsey Disability Alliance.
Thank you very much, and welcome. Can I start with Mrs Blanchard? Thank you very much for the written submission that the GDA has provided to us ahead of this panel hearing, and Avica Harwood referred to that a moment ago. It's quite clear you're saying that there's been little tangible progress in achieving the core strategic objectives of the strategy as stated in 2013, when the strategy was passed unanimously by the States. Can we start on a positive note? Do you think anything has improved for disabled people since 2013?
Yes, absolutely.
What has?
So, I think the fact that we're having this conversation, the fact that legislation, we've talked about legislation resources coming, the fact that we're now on a project around the ERO, that we have two of those big pieces of work prioritised, two out of 23 of the PNR strategies. We have a dementia framework, an autism framework, there's some small areas around those and their implementation. We have full ownership within the ESS Employment Social Security Committee. We truly believe that the board there owns this, owns it as a strategy. And from a committee, sorry, that's a civil servant point of view, from a committee point of view, as in a political point of view as well. I think there have been changes. The audit that was done by the States brought up issues around customer service, around information, around employment. Those haven't been shared to date, but at least those have taken place. That's something that will come through.
Do you think those could be shared, certainly in the first instance, with scrutiny?
That's not my call. I'd like for them to be shared.
With some of your colleagues.
Yep, yep. So, that would be obviously up to civil service. I believe those are currently with Paul Whitfield. Certainly, our President of ESS is pushing for that. I think the things that are really important for disabled islanders are tangible. So, can we access transport? Some improvements, maybe not as far as we'd like them to be. Have we got information, for example, websites available to us? Yes, that's better. Still has a place to go. But at the end of the day, I suppose the biggie for us, there's obviously many work streams within this, is more around rights. And have those up till recently been prioritised? I think our members will still feel frustrated about that. But there has been progress, and I'd say the fundamental change has probably been in the last nine to 12 months. And 80% of our frustrations have been prior to that.
So, just so we're very clear on what you're saying, the positives, I mean, can we talk kind of brass tacks? What is better for disabled islanders in this community now than it was only a few years ago?
Okay.
Can we talk kind of brass tacks, actual specific concrete examples?
Okay. So, I think if we go through, for each person, that's going to be completely different.
Absolutely.
So, for example, let's start with employment. We have the Guernsey Employment Trust. That's been an excellent initiative. That's now embedded in, that's now working with employers, doing workshops for employers. They've got a good practice guide, and they've also got a charter from employers that is starting to pick up, those that are signing up to that. So, is Phase One of the Guernsey Employment Trust working? Absolutely. Have we got way to go? Yes, again, but that's a very, very tangible unemployment.
Just to follow up, how many people actually benefit from the GET initiative?
Oh, my goodness.
Do you know, Avica?
I do. I know that it's pretty much doubled or tripled from where it was before, and so you have to give me a second.
There is progress, I mean, more and more people are here.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Certainly, I can get those figures for you, I've certainly seen those, I can't remember at the moment. But certainly the people that are placed and supported in there. Now, the criteria around employment has changed. So, those that are using GET, it's wonderful, but it is stricter criteria than it used to be. And so there are people that fall outside of GET, and those that fall outside, I would say have been missed at the moment. So, if we're talking.
Can you just expand on that? What groups of people are not qualified to benefit from the service?
I'll just take that because with another hat, I'm Ron Short. And certainly people who would once have been able to find support no longer meet the GET criteria. And so we see a greater influx into the third sector of people who are not easily employable but still need meaningful work.
I mean, how fundamental was the change of criteria?
I think if you are the person that is now admitted for the service, that is very fundamental. I have respect for GET staying core to their focus so that they can get that job done and do well, which they are doing. But I suppose where we'd like to see improvements is what happens when people fall outside of that, and where's their voice, and what's available to them.
So, would you like the existing service to have a broader remit? Or do you think it's rightly focused and there ought to be some other provision for the people that don't fall within that remit?
My personal opinion is that I feel GET's got a good focus and it's doing well. That's my personal opinion. I know in the, I should state, I sit on the Disability and Inclusion Strategy Board, and I know there's conversations there around, and there has already been work about identifying those gaps, but so far, that service provision, as far as I'm aware at the moment, has not in place. So, that's an example within employment.
Again, from within the third sector, sorry, I should have come through the check, but I'd like to support the same thing. Our view is also that GET has very, very good criteria. The difficulty is, as partnership grows between the States and the third sector, how we actually manage to pick up some of the slack without sufficient support from the States. I think we're rightly targeting people, but the third sector is going to require a little bit more help to step up to the mark.
Okay. So, Mrs Blanchard, you gave one example, any others?
So, I'm not sure if everyone's aware, the difference between what affects anyone with a disability or a carer, because we should point out that certainly from our mandate and the strategy, it's disabled islanders and carers. There's work streams within that, and they are employment, frameworks around communication, autism, learning difficulties, dementia, the legislation, the information awareness raising, the audit, or what we call the State's review, the capacity legislation, and their safeguarding. So, those are the work streams. But I like, so I think about it more around how much access to the community do our members have? So, can they take part, can they go to a restaurant easily? Can they go to the theatre easily? Can they access work? Can they access the right education? And if we think around those topics, there has not been as much speed around those as we would like to have.
I think your written submission centred on three, didn't it?
Yes.
The lack of tangible progress on the implementation of disability discrimination law, on the equality in rights organisation, and on raising awareness and changing attitudes. I think those were the three. Shall we say, shall we deal with those in turn? Why has there not been more progress made on the disability discrimination law, for example, in your opinion, from your GDA perspective?
I suppose it would be useful if at some stage people can see our submission, there's nothing confidential about that. If you want me just to highlight that. So, the highlight, I suppose, for us would be that we didn't feel there was the right resources put to that project. And when I talk about resources, that's absolutely not financial, we should be clear, there was resources that were in the public domain, so £250,000 put to that, of which that's mostly still or half unspent. So, when we talk about resources, we're talking about resources around capability, so people with the right experience. We're talking about prioritisation, so i.e. has that legislation project been prioritised within the States? And we're talking about the, I suppose, political will to move that at the correct speed that we thought was necessary when you're talking about rights.
I mean, what comes out of your submission, again, if people see it, it does help. There's a kind of clear distinction, isn't there, between what happened between 2013 up to the election in May 2016, and what's happened since? Before we go on to what's happening now under the Committee for Economic Social Security, can we just spend a few minutes on exactly, from your perspective, what really happened between 2013 and up to the election in 2016?
Sure.
You know, where was the progress on the law? If we start with the law just for a moment.
Okay. So, the strategy was passed, and honestly, there was a real euphoria. And then that was split into something that Avica Peter Harwood mentioned before. So, there was a group called the Disability Legislation Group that had political membership, business, third sector membership amongst others. And there was a steering group called the Disability Implementation Group, so DISIC. Those groups, unfortunately, this is our opinion, didn't manage to progress in that time. I mean, why not?
Do you want me to take that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically, the Implementation Group for the disability strategy was a scrutiny group without many teeth, really. The way it worked is that you would get various people who had work streams in the strategy in and question them on their progress. But you didn't actually have any teeth or any budget to do anything if they didn't do what they were supposed to be doing. And what happened then is that you would report back to the Policy Council through the Social Policy Group every quarter. And then it was the weird situation that I would be berating the ministers on what their staff hadn't been doing in the last three or four months. And then obviously, they would say that this is terrible, and they were going to go sort it out. And they would have another conversation similar to that about three months later. But it's interesting, there was no, on that group, we didn't have a minister on that group, or someone who could bring people to account.
What was the political structure then? The fact that it didn't fall under one specific committee, that it was...
It was under Policy and Resources.
Policy Council.
Policy Council. Policy Council, of course, fed into by lots of different people rather than being a specific group, you know, it's not as focused as, for instance, employment and social security is now. I don't know.
No, no, it's not. That was one of the issues. And it got off to a very slow start because we had things like the recruitment of the disability officer. Now, when this strategy actually went to the States, at the time, I was in the States and I took an amendment asking that, because I wanted the disability officer to be a senior person, to be able to push this, because it's a strategy that straddles the different departments in the States, or different committees as they are now. So, I didn't want to be prescriptive and say to, you know, civil services, you have to have someone at this level. So, I asked for it to, you know, for the job description, everything, to be put through their grading system. Unfortunately, it went into their grading system and it didn't come out for about four months. You know, I was expecting it to be a couple of days. And when it did come back, the job description had changed and the responsibilities of the disability officer ended up being just a couple of the work streams and not everything that we had envisaged. But we end up with a very good disability officer but not doing the job that we first envisaged that they would do. So, and then it took another, after that four months, it took another nine months to recruit that person. So, after the strategy's been passed, you're looking at 13 months before you've got what the resources in that's actually mentioned in the strategy.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, what we're saying is clearly not a lot was achieved particularly between 13 and 16 on the law, on the equality in rights organisation. Is that also true in relation to kind of raising awareness, changing attitudes as well, in that period?
I think we probably need to separate the two, if that's okay. So, there's one difference between information, so whether that's physical information or information on a website, and there's a difference between raising awareness and changing attitudes. The first, in that period, I'm afraid I didn't come back to the island and was in this post until April 15. I would say it was slow, certainly from what I've seen when we were doing that research. But in this period, that's picked up. So, we have signpost dot UG, we have a connection for information that's certainly better than it was. But raising awareness and changing attitudes, as you've seen in our court, that's something that we've put pressure on more recently and has been accepted as a priority. So, it was fairly poor in that period, yes.
Avica Harwood.
Can I just follow up? Towards the end of 2015, the Policy Council did present an update to the States, I think, on the strategy, on the implementation strategy. And I think each department that they then were made their own comments as to what steps they were taking. Did your organisation take any, have you been able to follow up from that, actually to see, to monitor whether what was said was true and how it's being implemented at each departmental level? Was that a step too far for your limited resources?
Probably for the GDA to do that versus the States to do that was probably a step too far. We absolutely read them, looked at that. I suppose the problem for the GDA, just in case people aren't aware, is obviously we have no funding from the States. People believe it were part of the States, so I just want to clarify that we're not, we're a charity, we're independent. And in our 10 years, we haven't received any funding for that. And as you're probably aware, at that moment, there was also a social policy explosion. So, we spent an awful lot of our time with things like SLA, so Supported Living, Aging Well, CYPP, at the same, sorry, Children Young Peoples Plan. So, did we review those? Did we take the time? We didn't go back to every single person. But again, our priorities, as in the GDA's versus the political and civil service priorities, are mostly around rights and the rights of islanders. So, we absolutely want everything on the ground to change, but we can only put our limited resources to those.
We'll come on to what's happening now and what's happened since the election in just a moment. I just want to kind of push you on this. Do you think the GDA bears any responsibility for the lack of progress today?
I think if you're referencing, are we, well, I would use the word purist to what we want for our members and the rights that we want for our members, and making sure those rights, in our view, are correct, I'll reference Jersey in a minute, i.e. social model versus medical model.
We'll definitely come on to that.
Yeah, I absolutely, and we, sorry, this report is submitted by the holiday day, not myself. We absolutely hold our hand up to being, in our way, scrutiny backed. Yes, that caused some delay, but is that our role? At that time, we were a campaigning body. We don't call ourselves that anymore. The strategy is in, we're doing our best to influence now and support with research and reports and everything else. At that time, were we pushing and pushing and pushing? Absolutely. Has Jersey gone down a different route by not having a GDA? I have to admit, they did make a submission, a very long one. Then, we stand by that, but that was...
Just to clarify, you think probably some rights could have been in place now, I don't know if we'd adopted the UK or a GANSE vibration of the UK law, but you wanted something better and that's affected the timescale. Is that correct?
I don't know if it's better than it is.
The long-term damage by implementing a poor policy is much worse than the delay of actually ensuring that you have a good policy.
We had one chance to get it right, so let's get it right. It was our thinking behind this.
Okay. All right. I mean, obviously, the GDA works in partnership with the States. It is a partnership. Do you think it's an equal partnership, Mrs Blanchard?
It's changed over time. So, as I mentioned, I've been off island, so when I, no, is the answer. Has that got better over time? Absolutely. There's no doubt whatsoever that I feel that we have a seat at the table on boards and on that, and we have to, to some degree, make some concessions around that. Was it in the past? Absolutely not. Like, in some of those meetings, DISIC, DRG, I think, points were made, and those could easily have been ignored, or, you know, not passed through, or voice not heard, but absolutely no.
Okay. Can we come on to where we are now and where we were since the election? Because you are much more positive about the change of government, as it were, and the responsibility for disability policy in the strategy moving to the Committee for Economic Social Security. I think you talk about your members having a newfound confidence in that committee to progress the strategy. Can I just press you on what has created that sense of confidence, exactly? Let's start with you, Mrs Blanchard.
Maybe if I could just clarify there, I don't know that we use the word members. So, I have a position that's actually quite difficult even within my own executive. So, I sit on the Disability and Inclusion Strategy Board, and I cannot pass my executive most of the time, let alone our members' information. So, I have a seat at that table, and that's a very fine line between, the difference between campaigning and having that. I am more comfortable because I hear that, I hear the debate, I believe we have partnership, we have respect. Do our members still feel that, well, they're on the ground every day, struggling, whether that's to get transport, whether that's to have access? So, I would just like to clarify the difference.
Just for the record, I'm quoting from your submission, and I quote, "In the past few months, GDA members have gained confidence."
Okay, all right. So, in the past few months, yes, make a pardon, versus 2015. Okay. So, the difference between 2016 and, for me, is our members probably did not, and the last few months, I hope they would have, the things we've already mentioned, legislation, ERO. Your question was around why, is it all...
Yeah, essentially, yeah. So, what has created that confidence?
Okay.
Last two months.
Yeah, the confidence in just the last two months? Or would you like me to go back slightly further? Because I think it's quite important to go back to the political change.
Go back as far as you need to.
Okay. So, towards the end of 2015, when it was still Policy Council, the key resource that was on disability and inclusion strategy and all other social policy left and was not replaced. And that meant everything stalled. So, we talked about stalling for nearly 18 months, and in that time period, we had a political change, we had obviously a change of assembly, and then we also had a change of civil service. Now, normally, the civil service is the static or the continuum. It wasn't. In the new committee and the new ESS civil service, everybody was new, including myself, because before that was Rob Platts and Shalane Green. So, we're all sat there with absolutely no continuity and very poor notes to follow that through. Fortunately, ESS were very receptive to that. So, we spent nearly, probably nine months, 10 months catching up, doing induction. Now, for that period, there was very little movement. So, did we have confidence in that first period? Did our members have confidence? Probably not. Did we have confidence sitting in there with people with good business plans, people that were committed, people that turned up to every meeting? Absolutely. But was there a change? Not at that time. Was there a political willingness? We were in that room in front of that committee, the politicians, within three or four weeks, I think. And they invited us in, we gave them induction, we told them about, you know, shared our priorities. So, we saw that, but the change on the ground wasn't there. And I really wanted to separate those two things.
Yeah, yeah.
So, moving forward from that, I think the key then around is what was happening within the work streams and the prioritisation. So, the issues in the past had been that we didn't believe there was political ownership, we didn't believe there was prioritisation, and there wasn't the capability and the skillset to make these things progress. And over that time, we absolutely saw that change. So, we saw a senior and very high calibre member of staff come into the legislation. More recently, we've seen that within the ERO, and more recently, yesterday and today, we've seen that within the legislation project. Prioritisation, calibre of staff, commitment are the things that will make this strategy move and that weren't there in the past. Do we look back and we're frustrated? You can probably hear it in my voice, absolutely. Were we today? We have those three things, I think.
So, you benefited, in fact, from the changes of government?
Absolutely.
Means it is now anchored into one department?
One department that have a very good system of sort of governance and project management, and a very good political committee that is dedicated to this. So, those two things have made a phenomenal difference. Has it gone fast enough? Of course, we want it to go faster. Are we in a better place today than we were two months ago, when we were extremely disappointed October, November, maybe? Yes.
Mr Roffey.
Yeah, just, I guess it's a bit of a scary thing for me as well, that looking at the political board we've got, it's probably the best, the most pro disability and inclusion strategy board we could hope for, like we've had in the past or probably will in the future. So, there's a bit of a scary thing. I hope they get it done in this term, otherwise, you know, if we don't do it now, we might not get it done. So, this is why we're still pushing.
Well, with that in mind, I mean, we've read the news the last day or so, that experts from Ireland have been identified to go out and research five or six different countries to see what should be the best one for Guernsey. That's another period, another phase that's taken up time before the next election. Do the GDA not know this? Haven't they already sort of looked around the world and decided which they think are the best models to go?
Yeah, we have.
Who should we be emulating?
And that's, that information has, fortunately, it's not here, Mr Rob Platts has done a lot of that work. But they've decided they need to go off and do their own thing and can't necessarily rely on our opinion, like we'll go out to air.
And again, sorry.
Can I just, or publicly acknowledge actually what Rob Platts has done in this area? Sorry, can I acknowledge the work that Rob Platts has done in this area? Because he had done a lot of work actually comparing jurisdictions, and I think we were working, when I was involved, very much along the Canadian, as the model to follow. There were difficulties with that.
This is why I'm conflicted. So, we have other people that are conflicted. I sit on the legislation group, and so I see the work that we're doing, and so does Rob Platts, actually, we both do. And that group is a significant change from, Mr Peter Harwood's already acknowledged, Peter Harwood's already acknowledged DRG. It's very respectful. I have some, I don't know if the word, sympathy with bringing in independent legal expertise reviewers. It will be done in a fast timeline, it will be done with confidence that it hasn't been done by a group who has provided phenomenal research, as in Rob Platts, but there is some independence of that. So, I sit a little bit on the fence on this, as in I understand why somebody may choose to do that. It is a shame that maybe three, four years ago, that wasn't used, but for a committee that owns that and is now moving with that, then this is where we're at.
Can I bet you a concern of mine, perhaps, and just see what your take is on it? We've heard that you're very keen to get this tied up inside the current term. If, whether it's Canadian model or Norwegian model or whatever, comes back and it doesn't gel particularly well with our existing body of legislation, and our legislative resources are tied up with the side effects of Brexit or whatever, and I could see that you could identify the absolute perfect law, but it might take time before it's actually, all the other Guernsey laws can be adapted to fit it in.
Absolutely.
So, I wonder where the compromise comes before getting the absolute perfect law and getting in some rights in a relatively fast timescale.
Okay. I think you've hit the nail on the head there on why Rob and I, both of us, have realised there was a compromise. So, for example, we were, an example would be, we were strongly in favour of Canada, we feel that that's a place, and we have a big difference to Canada, we don't have a constitution. So, we could take Canada and we try and apply Canada to Guernsey, and all of a sudden So we could take Canada and we try and apply Canada to Guernsey, and all of a sudden, we've got this big block. And they've got that block within the Law Office and everywhere. So compromise, it has been around. As we've had respectful intellectual conversations around the model, we've realised we've had to change our direction. Has that delayed things? Maybe, but the delay, as I've mentioned before, has been mostly within the last three or four years, three years before that. So it needs to fit for Guernsey. And we need to make sure that then obviously fits with the prescribing, the drafting within the Law Office.
I also think it's a mistake to expect a compromise to be second best. One of the good things about a proper compromise is it draws out the best from both sides of the parties. We repeat the same point over and over again. To implement a strategy that hasn't been robustly argued through is to just create long-term problems. And that's what we've seen in other jurisdictions. What we're trying to avoid is following pathways that other people have already followed that have led to complete chaos in terms of rewriting legislation, trying to adapt policies. You know, we're saying, does our law fit? But all those people who took a shortcut are having even more trouble fitting their law around the reality of the lives of persons with disabilities.
Are we saying, I mean, if you put to one side for the moment, which particular jurisdiction is deemed to be the best? As an organisation, are you saying that you still favour the social model?
Absolutely. There's no doubt about that whatsoever.
That's a stake in the ground that you do not desire from.
Absolutely.
Believe in the social model.
Absolutely.
So therefore, you don't believe in the medical model.
Absolutely.
So can I ask you something? Excuse my naivety, I'm just trying to, I wasn't in the States when this came to the States. How many countries follow what you would call the social model and how? You know, the UK and now Jersey are looking to get on the medical model, is that? Which is most common?
It varies, and it varies between lots of different jurisdictions. I'll give you a copy of Rob's Ocean Report. Because he summarises all of that. And we can't actually split them easily, social and medical. So the key would be between what type of jurisdictions. So do we want a UK model? If we spend a little bit of time researching that, we'd absolutely say not from anyone with a disability's point of view. Do we want something that's closer to Canadian, Australian, Kiwi, Irish, sorry, New Zealand? Irish then, absolutely. So it's more around the ethos around that, and it is split. And we've got a table on it that we're more than happy to share as part of this pack. And it's not clearly one or the other. So Jersey believes it's gone down the social model?
But you don't.
And yet, well, it isn't. It has in it a six-month medical element to it, so no.
And just to find what, is a medical model one where an individual with a disability can say, look, I'm experiencing difficulties and overcome it because of me, and a social model where there's just a presumption that you should, everything should be designed to avoid that arising in the first place?
We spent a year on.
I'm a new boy here, so I'm asking a naive question.
That's a very good question. How I could summarise it rather than one year's worth, and this is my interpretation, is that within the medical model, you need to prove you are disabled to say that you have been discriminated against. So if you, if we're talking race, like if you're black, do you have to prove that? If we're talking any other characteristic, do you have to prove that you've been discriminated against? In the social model, what we're talking about is, is our society, are the barriers that stop you getting employment, taking part in life, are those the things that are stopping you? And we absolutely agree that that is.
Let me give an example. Jersey have now said you need to show ongoing problems for six months. You have a car accident, you've shattered your leg in several places, for three or four months, you're not going to be able to walk. Should your employer make reasonable adjustment for you to be able to work while you're in a cast? Medical model, Jersey style, absolutely not. You can't prove you're going to be disabled for six months. So you're in complete limbo. We want to deal with issues as they arrive in the time scale over which they're in place and not try and put people in boxes.
So I'm just trying to, like my colleague, I'm not an expert in as much as either dispersing law, I'm just trying to get my head around, on the one hand, you're saying definitely the social model, no to the medical model. On the other hand, you were talking about compromise a moment ago. How exactly does that compromise come in? I'm talking about the social model, which does to me, as a layman in this matter, sound like a council of perfection. I'm not sure whether it is or not, but yeah. How do you reckon so?
Yeah, I think there's compromise within the way in which we do things and how we do them, how fast. And then there's a compromise in, will people's rights absolutely be protected? And will they have a quality of opportunity? And I don't, from our point of view, and actually, I think I'm right in saying that the States actually agreed, social model.
Yeah.
It's an institution.
We'll come back to that.
Okay.
I think you're right, but anyway, yes.
I will not, just to be clear, I have a past life as a H R director and a business owner. I am not denying that it will be possibly quite difficult for businesses and goods and services and education to get their heads around that. It's much easier to put people in a box. Is that the right place to put them? And if we want to talk about eliminating discrimination, then I feel that we feel that we absolutely shouldn't. And that is, has been, you know, to some degree, the delay in one year of debate within the room. But that is, I would say, a non-negotiable in our minds, but other things have compromised.
Are you satisfied that there is adequate budget now being put to this project, to the strategy?
Okay, so budget hasn't been an issue. Obviously, things like recruiting legislation experts into the island is different. The prioritisation within P and R hopefully brings with that a different way of accessing budgets. To be honest, at the moment, I still don't believe budget is an issue as of today. Is budget an issue going forward? Absolutely. Are we committed to this? Will there be the right resources for that? We haven't had a debate about the E R O yet, the Equality Rights Organisation, what that will look like. We haven't done raising awareness and changing attitudes. When I say we, I should separate that for the States, sorry. So at this present moment in time in the past, it hasn't been a budget issue. Going forward, it is the board's priority.
What's the GDA, if we can impart the law for the moment, I'm sure we'll come back to that with the politicians at the moment. In terms of the Equality and Rights Organisation, from the GDA's perspective, what would that body do?
Oh, it's a very good question. It was our E R O meeting yesterday. No, sorry, yesterday. And it hasn't actually, that hasn't been decided. We're actually negotiating or talking about the model that we will present with P and R and building the business case.
That depends what will it do, or what should it do?
Okay. At the moment, there is, Equality Rights Organisation is bare minimum and needs to inform and educate. We don't have that anywhere, and anywhere that's independent of the States. So that would be the absolute sort of bare minimum. What it could then do on top of that would range from anything from sort of monitoring to quasi-judicial to anything like A C A S or any of those. What it should do and what it could do, and what you talked about compromises just now, that is actually going to be for us to put a business case together and for that to be debated. I would hope that absolutely bare minimum, we reach a point that this body is proactively working with the community, with businesses, with the right groups, to ensure that we're forming, educating and understanding where we are within discrimination. And we must emphasise this as an equality rights organisation, not a disability.
That's what I was going to ask. Do you see it specifically focusing on disability issues? Or do you see equality issues broadened that, but obviously encompassing disability issues?
So I'm not sure if everyone's aware. So if you look at equality in its broadest context and just picking out a number of characteristics, we have no discrimination law in Guernsey for any characteristic across all areas, employment, goods, services, education, et cetera. We have something within sex and employment, for example. We don't have C D O, we don't have anything around goods and services. So if we take a great big grid, we have a tiny little cross in equality. Next up is disability. We have age, we have everything else, race, religion, all of those to come. To do that effectively, I personally believe, and we've canvassed and understood and compromised in the GDA around this, that equality in its broader sense needs to be understood. And that's why it's an equality rights organisation that helps us, that helps everyone else that's been discriminated against. If we and when we are the first piece of legislation that comes up, it means it will be prioritised.
When it's been spoken about in the past as far as gender discrimination, the focus seems to have been almost exclusively on the workplace, but of course, that's only one part of life. So how do you see this body? Do you see it focused on the workplace, or do you see it much greater than that?
This was the other dilemma within Disability Legislation Group. We absolutely, absolutely, and this is where the GDA has been firm again on social and medical model, believe that it absolutely must be around goods and services and accessing those. Employment's excellent. Well, if you're under sixteen, fifteen, if you're over a certain age, you're not in employment. But guess what? You still want to take part in life. If you, you know, accessing goods and services is crucial to equality of opportunity. And in many ways, that's discriminating, otherwise, you know, to bring one first. And I have to say, this may sound quite critical, if you look at sex and it only been employment, that hasn't moved for a long, long time. To say we do this first and it'll come later, I'm afraid, you know, that confidence isn't there. We absolutely believe that we need to do it altogether. That makes it a very big piece of work, but it absolutely should be about equality of opportunity across all areas.
Can we just go back to equality and rights organisation? I mean, one of the key issues around that was in order to satisfy the United Nations Paris, the Paris Principles. I mean, as I read that, I don't, I suspect there's not much ground for compromise if we want to be able to satisfy those particular set of principles.
Well, when we looked at this only just yesterday, as I say, it's very fresh at the moment. I do think, I do think there is. We're looking at, we were up till yesterday, looking at a range of models that went from sort of absolutely bare minimum working its way up. That, we can have an opinion on that, that's not ours, that's, you know, E S Ss and politicians to decide. But there's also a staged approach. So for example, we could have a non-strategic body during the, in the informing and educating piece before it becomes a statutory body. There's examples around whether it could be Channel Islands, whether what it does and doesn't include in the line of employment. So I think there's absolutely compromise. The key is, the key is how things are split between the civil service and non-strategic body and any third sector input. And at the moment, I don't think any of us have far off along on that.
You're referring to a non-strategic body, but you can have...
Up until the legislation is passed.
Okay. There's no statute to make it a statute.
Yes, sorry. Thank you for clarifying. So one thing that we believe is really important, and I believe that we've got the support of the committee, is that you need an E R O, an Equality Rights Organisation, before you have legislation. Imagine you're a business, where do you go, where do you get information? How do we inform? How do we educate? How do we? We want to put people at ease and to understand what it means. And you need that to prepare the community of businesses for the legislation. And the legislation, even if we get that, a policy letter in front of this year, in front of the States, we're talking, you know, drafting, yes, you know, but we can start changing people's attitudes.
Sorry to ask you for your base question, but that body will have quite a big job of work to do. It would take a lot of time. You see a lot of paid employers, or do you see a mix of paid and voluntary? Or how do you perceive that?
Okay, quite a tough question again, because we're literally, yesterday, we were playing that. The business case goes in spring, so we're only a couple of months away from that. I think it might be a question that would be fair to ask next. I feel slightly conflicted as I sit on that board. I personally am not seeing this huge, huge body. Again, it probably comes back to capability and capacity and pure partnership. Deputy Chris Green asked me earlier about partnership. It didn't exist three years ago. It does now. If you own true partnership, there is no reason that there couldn't be support around that and working together, you know, within the E R O. But the ownership absolutely has to be there, and it has to eventually be non-strategic, so it's independent. But we don't know, will it have a monitoring role? We don't know, will it have a quasi-legislation role? As in, will it be pre-tri-bun? We don't know that yet.
Just make a point there. I think what we need to do is actually be honest with this. When this policy letter goes to the States, it needs, if it is going to have paid staff, then it needs to have that budget put in it. Because we know what happens if it doesn't. It's one of the problems we've had historically.
As somebody who wasn't in the States in 2013, it feels like a policy letter pretty much uncosted went, which was easy to sign up to because people weren't signing away a particular amount of money. And then, of course, the resources, I know you say it's not financial, it's staff, but it does feel to me as if, yeah, okay. You're right. I think you mustn't overpromise and underdeliver.
Yes, actually, that's a phrase that's been used.
And I think it's important to remember that we may not be looking at an even cost. Establishing the E R O, there's going to be an awful lot of work in the initial stages as legislation comes in. We would expect that to taper off. So you may want to say, we're going to need two, three paid staff for three years. And it's going to phase down to one permanent staff member as the initial demand tapers off as well.
Yeah, and if you had scores of appeals from a statutory body about discrimination, then we failed really, haven't we? Because it means we haven't got rid of the...
We haven't got it right at the beginning.
Really good point. I would really like to emphasise that. The idea behind this body, and certainly the, why we're just such a big fan of it, is that if we are doing a lot of that pre-work, that we're not wanting people to go to tri-bun. We are not wanting to go through the courts. And that's why this is really important. I'd just like to emphasise again, when it gets to budget and the debate, we are talking about an equality rights organisation, not a disability. So it is paving the way for what will hopefully come, whether that's age next, whether that's race, whichever areas come next.
We got any other questions for the GDA members?
Just one specific question. You referred to the autism strategy before, where I know we've got a representative of H S C later. Media reports the last day or two about no new registrations of people with autism. Don't mean to distrust the media, but what is the situation on the grounds, as far as you're concerned?
It is a critical situation. It absolutely is. So what was, I think we need to separate probably two things, and it came within our report. So E S S is responsible for the strategy, but the work streams are co-responsibility, mostly with health and social care after that. And there's a quite a big difference between getting a framework in place, which is what the strategy is about, and then delivery of services. And within that, same with autism, with dementia, sorry, are deliverables that are core to having a service. And unfortunately, due to the resources leaving them, not being available, there absolutely is a crisis point with being diagnosed.
So in paediatrics, new referrals are not being taken, as you understand. That was the report that I was sort of picking up from the media the last couple of days.
If I can step in there with my little sandwiched in roll between the GDA and the States, but also in the States. That particular work stream, so the framework was put in place and diagnosis pathway was put in place. And the pathway itself is a direction that you go in, different steps. One of the, the second big step is a panel, and one of the people on that panel would be the paediatrician. That paediatrician is leaving at the end of January. Should there be something put in place while they look for a different paediatrician? That would be up to H S C to look with the M S G, whether there's a locum coverage or how they deal with that in terms of their decision to not take referrals and build up a waiting list. But they need to signpost properly to what other areas of support are available to them. But that piece of work is sitting, it's an operational side rather than the policy development.
The strategy is done, and it's right, but it's just a question of implementation. I say just, it's more than just.
But no one can access it, that's the problem.
And my understanding is you can't access it, there won't be a waiting list either, because you can't go on a waiting list if there isn't one. Which means we just have a black box.
Yeah, we try to tell the parents that the strategy is fine and it won't be much.
I think highlighted a point that's really caught up to us in our role. So as most people are probably aware, the Guernsey Disability Alliance is a member organisation. We have four to member charities. And our core role is around the strategy, two key streams around legislation and the E R O. It doesn't mean any of the other work streams are equally important, but they sit with our member charities. We have, we only have one paid employer, myself, part-time and finishing in April. And to cover all of those is not part. It's really important that we, you know, that that member's voice is heard and that the ongoing issues around disability and crisis that happen in different areas, you know, are tackled on the ground. I think we need to sort of try and keep the strategy at that.
Can I just follow up on that? And Deputy Hanson Russell, do I understand therefore that basically we're saying a strategy can get totally derailed because of the lack of one person?
No, that's not what I was saying.
Well, sorry, I agree with your point.
The parts of the process, from what I understand, you know, from mind to action with both, you know, being the conduit between Guernsey, autism Guernsey, and trying to get to the bottom of what this was. The processes and the pathway has been developed. And yes, there is the potential that the progress along that pathway would stop until they have a new person in place or they have cover of that particular expertise within that panel, within the second step of the diagnosis pathway. Because it's not just about getting a diagnosis, it's also about how you actually then deliver a plan for that particular individual that works with them.
I mean, can I ask a general question of the GDA? I mean, is there a concern that we are, with these strategies, given the size of Guernsey, that we are, well, the critical issue we have is that we become dependent on perhaps just one person in a lot of the instances?
Yes, I mean...
I mean, no, delay in recruitment can delay the whole...
Yeah, that can happen. But certainly in this case, I think that we've got the new contract with the Medical Specialist Group. Maybe I'm wrong, but I think it should be under their responsibility. it should be under their responsibility to bring in a locum to carry on the service. So maybe that's a question worth asking.
I would say that HSC is experiencing already a painful transition between a medical model and a social model. And, and, you know, this, they, they are implementing a social model for autism, they're coming out of a medical model and they are experiencing some teething problems. And it isn't really just about, about one person, there's a whole culture change that has to begin and filter through the HSC. And that means things are just awkward and complicated, not hopeless.
Okay. And Deputy Handsman Rusell, obviously you're the States Disability Champion. And how, how have you found it since you've been in office? Presumably it's been quite a frustrating process. Have there been specific barriers that you've encountered that have stopped you from being able to pull the wheels of the disability strategy?
Well, I, I think firstly I should define what my role is. Because there seems to be, there seems to be a, a misunderstanding that somehow I'm, I'm responsible for the disability inclusion strategy. But my role is, is supposed to be threefold, you know, one, on one hand, supporting disabled islanders in their interactions with the States and also members and the GDA and how they interact with the States. And that involves taking on cases where either somebody has, is having interactions with the States and there's a, there's a system failure, or they're having interactions and there's actually something highlighted that there needs to be a policy change. The, the second part is to promote awareness and amongst, in the States as well as in the community. And the third part is actually to scrutinise the development of, and implementation of those policies. So in terms of that first part of my role, you know, the, the support and providing, taking those cases and feeding, not only solving individual problems, but looking at how I can feed back into the, the different committees. So I've met with, gone to an ESS board meeting with a few cases where there've been recurring what seem to be different issues that.
Systemic, yeah.
And, and highlighting to them the difference that they might be experiencing on the high level policy side and actually what the, the implementation is on the floor. And on that side, there's been a lot of openness and interaction with the, the political members and openness for support from, from staff. So there hasn't been any barriers there. In terms of the exposure of my role, what came to light last year was that my role is not actually an official role. So it has no constitutional support. When the role was officially thought up and designed, it was designed as the, the support network would be volunteers and the GDA as opposed to how a committee would operate with having civil servants support. And I would operate as a, well, the disability champion would operate as a, with that role. Now, what, what has come to light is there isn't cover for the disability champion to, and has exposed myself to a particular issue with data protection. So seeing that role is not official or unofficial, you don't have any bite or mandate, and you also don't have any resources to do the, the broad spectrum of, of work that's needed. So.
I always assumed it was a GDA appointment rather than a States appointment, even though it was called the States as a disability champion and had to be a deputy.
Well, yeah, and that is why you've chosen to, to put me alongside the GDA.
I'm sorry if you're gay.
Absolutely, and it's not, it's not their fault, it's just interesting. So the, the origins, and this became apparent last year when I was trying to find out what the actual official status of the, the champion's role was. The origins were, it was a Policy Council ratification of this description and the role was then created. But it's not part of the constitution. So you work outside of the States, so I'm not working as a, in service of the public. Whereas if you are working within a committee, you are working within that coverage. In a similar way that a deputy working on parish issues is not covered and they work outside the States. And that, and that's a particular constitutional issue that I believe that the States.
And the one, the one particular issue you've, you've focused on is the issue about data protection. You think that is a barrier and that is causing a problem for you?
Certainly the amount of, if there's no resource and there's, you're not covered.
Is it data servicing rather than data protection?
It is data protection.
Okay.
Because as a deputy and, yeah, the data, you're the registered data controller. And how the disability champion was operating was with a team and therefore the data controller, be myself, would then be responsible for the team and without the proper individual bits in place.
Yeah, okay, so, I mean, you've given a bit of information about how you've approached the role. And do you have a view in terms of to what extent the States could or has already led by example in this area, I mean, from your experiences?
This is one of the frustrations is that it seems obvious that as the biggest employer on the island and that we, if we can't get it right, how are we expecting the wider community to get it right? A, a simple example, and I know that the disability online, disability awareness training is, is just a tiny step, but if members haven't even taken the step to do a small online training certificate, then, you know, what, are they really aware of, of even the basics of, of disability awareness? And yet, I've, I've gotten a, a reminder in my inbox today that I should do the, the cyber security online training by the 31st of January. But, you know, no such follow-up or teeth are implemented in order to actually get people to sign up.
Is that the only form? Honestly, I went, went to the website and they said you've got to register, set up an account and then you do six modules. And not being a computer orientated person, I thought, I'll wait till I can go along and have some proper training instead of, instead of doing this. I mean, I know it's probably more staff intensive to give, you know, human training rather than online, but.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. And that's one of the, the things that I did highlight, that we should be able to offer it, you know, that yes, there is this easy access online training, but if you're not even going to, you, you might not be the only person who's, who's not au fait with the computer online stuff.
Do you think it should be a component of, of induction when a, when a new States member is?
Oh, absolutely. And that, and that should have been integral and not just an online, there should actually be a whole module, but there should be lots more happening with the States induction. I have many thoughts on that.
Yes, of course. And in terms of other areas and ways in which the States could lead by example, again, from your experiences, is there anything else that you think has happened since you've been in, in office or perhaps could, could happen? Are there, are there any kind of quick wins? Are there any quick wins that the States could, could do to lead by example? Obviously it would be quite, the States has a great potential to act as a, as an example, hasn't it, in, in the community we live in?
One of the, the things that Karen mentioned, and it is something that I've, I've had my eye on in terms of the scrutiny part of my role, is the audit that took place, the disability audit, the, of each department across the States and the action plans from those. And I would be hoping that at some point we would see those action plans and actually that is, is tangible, something you can hold people to account on. And I have not been able to see them myself. So even within my role, I don't have the authority to ask to see.
Each department has been through the audit?
Yes, they're stateswide.
I think it might be useful for this committee because we get the presidents in front of us on a regular basis. That might be a thing we could ask them about.
Is that owned by each, each, each committee or is that owned centrally by policy?
Well, at this stage, I don't know where it, where it sits. You'll have to ask the, the political.
Does it cover accessibility of buildings, employment practices?
It covers, it unfortunately didn't cover the access of buildings, that's one of the things that we hoped it might have covered, but it did cover everything from employment processes and customer service and policies and procedures. They're very, I, I sit on the boards, again, this one I'm a bit conflicted, so I, I have seen them, they are very good documents done by BDF. But like we say, we're hoping for those to become available. My understanding is they're at SMT or up at that level and we hope that those can be shared and that'll be understood.
That's good. And just to wrap up this, this section, Deputy Handsman Rusell, how, how do you think your role could work better? I'm not talking about you personally, but in terms of the, the, not the job, but the role, how could it be made fit for purpose, do you think?
Well, that, I'm glad that you asked that. At the moment, in light of, of finding out that the role isn't really official, but there are definitely things that, that have been happening, that have fed into, you know, with the communications that I've done, that have fed into different things and allowed policy changes. So there are benefits to having the role. It's now whether a, a review needs to take place on the role and whether it needs to be an equalities role, or an equalities champion that sits underneath the ERO, or whether it needs to be an official disabilities minister or with its own resources officially within the, the constitution, if that's something required. And I think that, that review and that conversation needs to, to happen, you know, going forward because it is a bit of a mishmash at the moment.
Sorry, would there be any sense in, I'm not trying to do you out of a job, I'm just trying to think, but would there not be more sense in a member of the Committee for Employment and Social Security being the disability champion? Or is that too close?
Interesting, well, when the role was originally set up and, and looking back at the original intention is that the champion would not sit on and have political responsibility for any of the implementations. And that's why I sit outside, I'm not a, a member on the, the disability inclusion strategy. The sitting outside allows you to have that scrutiny role, which you guys should be doing.
Well, I'm always banging on about the fact that members of committees should be scrutiners as well, but no, I know what you're saying.
But sometimes when you're in a, on a committee or within the political board, and, and that's something that Karen's highlighted, is that, you know, it is a tension where you're not possibly able to scrutinise to the same degree.
Certainly if you wanted to go to the media and say, this, this committee aren't really doing what they ought to do for disabled people, it'd be awkward if you were a member of that committee, wouldn't it?
Yes, yes.
So how, how could it work?
So either that it is a part of the ERO work stream, so it becomes an equalities champion across the States. Or there are disability champions on each committee so that in order to ensure that when legislation does come before that committee, there is somebody that is highlighting to them. I mean, it's not quite possible for me as one individual to, to scrutinise every piece of legislation that comes through. But if there is somebody on those boards and that's highlighted and whether that's a subcommittee.
Excuse me. So in summary, you, you see your role primarily as two, scrutin, scrutin, scrutinering, to the extent you can, but also as a lobbyist? I mean, in terms of, you know, explaining to other States members, talking to other States members to, to get them onside if there's a piece of legislation or you want to get.
Absolutely, but then crucially there's also the, the not being in the civil service, that you are able to be approached by people that have, have had a failure with their interaction with the States and you're able to, to then help them with their individual program and feed that information back to the relevant committees.
Anything else?
Just maybe before they go, just ask the disability alliance if anything else they think we should. Bring to the next panel. Unless we've covered it all.
Before we go to the, the brief agenda, if there's anything else at all.
So I just made a quick look at our notes.
Did, did you say you're gonna, you're gonna publish your written submission?
I don't think we'd publish it as in the media, we certainly, we would do a statement, but we're certainly happy for it to be shared with people involved in the group. So for example, for, for ESSC and, you know, that, that's not a problem at all. And we'll do a short summary for, for the wider community. I think we're happy with that.
We're quite happy with it.
Okay.
Thank you. Deputy Michelle Leclerc, welcome.
Hello.
Obviously you've had a chance to listen to what was said by the members of the Guernsey Disability Alliance earlier this afternoon and indeed by Deputy Handsman Rusell as well. Is there anything else, is there anything you'd like to say, having heard what, what they, the previous witnesses said a moment ago in terms of the, of where we are now with the strategy and, and where we've come?
Well, I don't think I've got much more to say on, on, on that, on where we are now and as, as you've said, where we came from. I can't disagree with what has already been said on that. I would perhaps disagree with the fact that perhaps people are perceiving that no progress has been made in other areas. Perhaps on the legislation, legislation side, progress hasn't been made, but I would tend to disagree on other areas of the strategy and in particular some of the areas that health and social care are responsible for. But I think we've made significant improvements in that area. And again, you know, when we look at perhaps some of the mandate that we're now responsible for, for the housing mandate and the lead through to the GHA, and you look up what has been done with the extra care housing and the facilities that are now provided for all ages and through the two extra care, the fact that we've recently agreed to, for the funding for the eight autism units down at Nouvelle-Maritime. So I think some of the, I'm, I'm always disappointed that some of the positive things don't necessarily come across.
Yeah, yeah. That's fair enough.
Similar question to Deputy Yerby on HSC.
Yes.
So I, I mean, I think Deputy Leclerc referred to HSC and, I mean, Deputy Yerby, you're here on behalf of HSC and so do you want to point out some of the positives that you've, you've witnessed through HSC?
Yeah, I suppose I should make it clear that I am here on behalf of both committees on employment and social security. I'm effectively the sponsoring member for the disability and inclusion strategy. But of course, as a member of health and social care, I also have responsibilities there.
Thank you.
As, as was discussed in the last session, some of the, the more operational implementation of the strategy sits with health and social care. In particular, the strategy recommended the development of a number of frameworks, particularly around dementia and autism, learning disabilities and people with communication difficulties. If it helps to go back a step, when we started developing the strategy, because I, I was an officer working for the States at that time, what, what was done then was a, a disability needs survey was carried out. So, so the island population as a whole was surveyed to establish the prevalence of disability, of different kinds of impairments within the populations and the kind of social, environmental and attitudinal barriers that people actually face. So, you know, what was stopping people from participating in the community? And one of the things that that survey highlighted was some of the groups of disabled people who experience most difficulty in participating are, are those with dementia and with autism and so on. So that, that was what led to the strategy recognising a need to focus on these areas to ensure that services and support within the States and in the wider community were as effective as possible in supporting full inclusion of disabled islanders. And there has been some, some really positive work done. To take an example that, that straddles both the States and the third sector, over the last couple of years, there's been a development of a dementia-friendly Guernsey ethos. So that's been encouraging businesses and service providers, including us as the public sector, to do some training on what it means to be a dementia friend, so what it means to offer your services to behave in a way that is inclusive of people in dementia, with dementia. There have been some changes to service provision as a result of that. But there has also been a, a wider dementia framework developed within, within HSC. A member of staff was seconded for a number of months to, to work on that, to focus on that as his sole priority. And that has recommended changes to the services that we provide as well as community changes. And that has recommended changes to the services that we provide as well as community changes for people with dementia. So.
So yes, if we go back to the 2013 policy letter, I think it's Resolution Nine was to direct HSE as it then was to lead the development of the frameworks. If you refer to learning difficulties, dementia, autism. How much progress do you think has been made by health and social care on those frameworks?
From a strategy perspective, we've reached a point with both dementia and autism where frameworks have been completed. So in effect, we have a roadmap that says what needs to be done in these areas and we've moved into the implementation phase. And steps are being taken towards implementation. As your previous witnesses discussed, there is a hiccup at the moment, particularly affecting the diagnosis of children who may have autism. And if it helps, I can give a bit more clarity around that.
Yeah, it would be.
As was discussed, what's happened is that we are losing the pediatrician with the relevant skills to complete the diagnosis. What we are not losing at the moment is the ability to provide support to those children. So Mr. Harnish spoke about the need for HSE to move from a medical model approach to a social model approach. And this is in fact an exemplar of that because if you think about what a medical model implies, it implies needing to know the label and then switching on the services as a consequence of that. Whereas a social model involves looking at what a person's barriers are, what kind of support might be needed to be put in place in order to include people in the community and putting that support in place. So HSE has a resource allocation panel which looks at the needs of children and their families and aims to provide the most needed resources where there is that need. And that work is still ongoing even while the process of diagnosing children is paused. Obviously, we are looking to switch back on that diagnosis pathway as soon as we can. But it's not like we are hanging children and their families out to dry in the meanwhile.
Sorry, can I turn to Deputy Stevens as the member of Policy and Resources who oversees social policy, as I understand it? Have you got anything to comment on, again, having heard the witnesses in the earlier part of the session? Any particular?
Well, I'll firstly express a personal view on the, not to go into the history again, but just on my recollections. And in general, my recollections are pretty much the same as those have been expressed already. Just for context, I think I've been a member of the GDA since 2009. I sat in the 2008, 2012 assembly. I was the political champion for disability. I was the first one, so I have a memory of how that was set up and how it came into being. I chaired with Aaron Wilkie, the DISIG, and worked with Advocate Harwood, who was doing the legislation group. What I am pleased about, I think, on reflection is that the recommendations of DISIG that were put forward as part of the handover papers actually were taken up so that we now have political ownership with the committee, which I think actually strengthens the potential of action being taken. I was also pleased that there is now a dedicated group of civil servants who are supported through PNR with, I think, more than full time, on part time. Member of staff have been seconded or resourced over to ESS for that to happen. The issue about the medical, the tension between medical model and social model from my part, my personal view is that I've always been wedded to a social model, you know, and that has never been an issue that was particularly challenging to me, although I know that it was challenging to the group that Advocate Harwood chaired. The progress, I think, to say that there was very little progress from the setting up of DISIG until the change of government at the last election. I always find that a little hard to bear because actually I witnessed quite a lot of things that did change. There was mention, I think, of sort of the quality of partnership working between the states and the community. And just as an example, the current disability officer was appointed in a, from a partnership model in that I was a member of the community at that time. The, one of the exec of, or the chair, I think, of the GDA actually sat on the appointments panel and a senior civil servant sat on the panel. So that, you know, that was, if I can evidence partnership working, it was certainly there. The, there were also, at that time, there was, because the disability strategy was something that was, if I can say unknown in inverted commas, to many people. There was a great deal of awareness raising that was done by myself and the supporting officer from the Policy Council at the time. And we went together and we met with lots of people across HSE, for instance, in their offices. I might sort of start to talk to them about what the implementation might involve. And I must say, even at the earliest stage, the issues that became barriers to further progress, I think, were being raised at that time in that people were always going to give their first attention to the immediate job that, you know, whatever was on their desk, whoever rang them, you know, on the phone. It was, there didn't seem to make the connection between the fact that the strategy should be guiding that sort of work. It was always seen to be a separate piece of work that was given to them and that was going to be done whenever they had the time to do it. So in that sense, there was a policy adoption, a policy implementation and a policy integration issue, I think, that existed. But, you know, that was the sort of activity that was happening at that time.
Okay, thank you. I think if I could return to you, Deputy Leclerc, I think I'll, again, for a moment, I'll just ask the politicians because I think this is a political question in the main. Deputy Leclerc, do you totally accept that the state has signed up already to a social model in terms of the disability discrimination law that is going to be pursued? Are you of the view that that is what the state has already signed up to?
Let me just find page 2887 of, this is the BA from Wednesday, the 25th of November 2015. Paragraph 60. And it says, "As part of its deliberations, experts on the Canadian and UK systems have provided input to the DLG and given wider public presentations. The UK's Office for Disability Issues has also provided some advice. However, it is important to note that because it has already been agreed that Guernsey's legislation will be based on the social model of disability. It will not just be a matter of replicating the UK legislation, which is based on the medical model of disability. This is one reason why developing legislation specific to Guernsey has proven challenging." And then at the bottom, it indicates, there's a footnote. So this is my understanding. And what I will say is that when we spoke to the two experts, Dr. Quinn Livin and Dr. Buckley, on the telephone when we were doing the interviews, because we had a shortlist of three different groups, they were all indicating that the social model is the way to go forward. However, there are potential changes even to the social model. And I think the experts were excited about the opportunity of working with Guernsey because in fact it was a blank sheet of paper and that we could learn from the experiences of both the medical model that has already been implemented in jurisdictions, the social model that's already been implemented in jurisdictions and perhaps some new thinking that was coming along as well.
Yeah, so can I just pursue it slightly? Yeah, you're absolutely right. You actually very helpfully tweeted in response to the BBC, the very reference this morning, which is helpful. But I just want to push you slightly on it, if I may, which is that if you actually go back to the policy letter in 2013 within the resolutions, that my understanding is there wasn't actually an express endorsement of a social model within the resolutions of 2013. Deputy Yerby, you're looking for.
Maybe I can assist on that because if I remember rightly, the resolutions included a firm commitment to sign Guernsey up to the United Nations Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. And that convention is entirely framed around recognizing disabled people as equal members of society and focusing on changing the environmental and attitudinal barriers that prevent their full inclusion, which is what the social model is. So if it isn't spelt out in the resolution itself, it is implied by signing up.
But to some extent, whether or not the state signs up to that, your committee has signed up. You clearly believe that that's the right way forward.
Yes, the states of Guernsey have, in my view, and I think that statement in there.
But your committee is also endorsing that. Okay.
You described Guernsey as a blank sheet of paper. To what extent is it? I understand we don't have any disability legislation at the moment, but we have another body of legislation that it has to fit into. So is it absolutely a blank sheet of paper or, you know, do the law officers sort of take the view? Are they involved, for instance, in this research or have we just got these two gentlemen from Ireland doing it? Or is there anybody from the Guernsey legal establishment working with them to make sure that it will fit into Guernsey's legislative framework?
When we were interviewing, we discussed this and they are mindful that they will have to have some understanding of current Guernsey legislation and fitting into some of that Guernsey legislation. The next phase, this first phase will be, and I think we've already got dates in our diaries, that there will be workshops and we will have law officers involved in that. And that will have the GDA involved in that and interested parties. So that will be part of the consideration that they will be undertaking when they're reviewing the six jurisdictions.
What's the timescale for that piece of work?
The timescale for that piece of work is very tight. And we have asked to see at least the draft of that paper by the end of March with a view to having the final paper by the middle of April. So really tight for that phase one. But in saying that, I think we have to be aware, that is just really that analysis of the six jurisdictions and the way we should go. The bigger part of that work will be phase two. And we will need to have a business case for that phase two because the actual cost of this first phase of work is very, very reasonable and we can probably find within the budget that we've already got.
I was going to ask you about.
Definitely the phase two, we will have more meat on the bones to understand what the costings are likely to be for that phase two.
So just so we're clear, the cost of the first phase in terms of Doctors Buckley and Quinn Livin looking at the six models, what's the cost of that?
Well, I'm not sure that I can give that out. That might be commercially sensitive to do that. But I would say, as much as I can say, was very, very reasonable because we are, they're keen from an academic point of view to be involved in this.
And then the second phase that you just talked about, what exactly would that be?
Well, the second phase would be that by then we will know which jurisdiction they're recommending that we follow.
Well, they possibly need Prague.
The substantial parts of that jurisdiction. Or whether they still are recommending actually do it from bottom up. And then that will be actually working on the detail of that, preparing the policy paper, going out to consultation on that draft and then coming back to the states of Guernsey.
Can I just ask a question? I mean, in the original resolutions of the states back in 2013, the resolutions specifically said the enactment of legislation under prevention of discrimination enabling provisions bearing with Guernsey law, 2004. Is the view of your committee now that actually it's not going to be practicable to bring this legislation in under that enabling law and that primary legislation will be required?
Emily's on the working group, so probably much more speed on that.
As you say, it is enabling law and it is very broad in its drafting. It's quite probable that whatever model we select will be capable of being drafted as an ordinance. But it is impossible to give a guarantee on that without having had the decision on what model we're going to follow. Deputy Green, may I give, there seem to be some underlying questions or assumptions about the law project that maybe I could provide a bit of clarity around? I think one of the, one of them, as I understand it, is, you know, you have been pushing quite hard at the question of are we wedded to the social model? Is there merit in the medical model? Are we, by pursuing the social model, are we slowing the whole process down? And, you know, is this pursuit of perfection that's going to hang everything? I think, and what you and Advocate Harwood will be aware of more than anyone, is that you can, one can draft a perfect piece of law in one's own mind, but as soon as it's out in the real world, it's a living, breathing thing that has the hands of many, many people all over it. So it isn't just the words that are written on the piece of paper that matter. It's the judicial system around it. It's the case law. So Guernsey, starting from scratch and drafting its own bespoke legislation in an island where part of the reason why the progress on the disability law has suffered is there is no community of practice around human rights law here. The number of people who have an interest in that issue, either a policy interest or a legal interest in it, is very, very small. And so, you know, we are, we are starting from, we're starting on what's effectively a very new horizon without a great pool of minds to draw on. So part of the reason why the committee decided to go down this route of let's get some experts to help us and let's compare the laws of five or six other jurisdictions is the recognition that actually we don't just need the words on the paper. We are going to need the support in interpreting this in practice to make sure that it is as effective as possible in enabling disabled islanders to realize their rights. So it's not just the fact that we will have a good law, hopefully, that we can live from another jurisdiction, but also that our courts are capable of being guided by, and I say guided by because I know it won't be, it won't have statutory force, but being guided by the case law of that jurisdiction and the legal minds of that jurisdiction in the interpretation of that law. So that disabled islanders, not only at the point the law comes into effect, but as it is interpreted, as Guernsey builds up its own body of case law, it continues to be a positive progressive force that pushes for the inclusion of disabled people.
That's helpful. Can I, okay, after you.
Can I just follow up on that? Has your panel or your committee contemplated actually that in order to do what you want to do, you're going to have to bring in an equal rights legislation?
Yes. And in fact, three of the six pieces of, three of the six jurisdictions that were on the committee's initial shortlist, and this is a shortlist that is obviously up for discussion with our experts. But three of those have, provide protection to disabled people through full equality laws. Well, the other three provide protection through disability specific laws. So I think the feeling of the committee is if we can provide an equal or better standard of protection and we do it without significant delay and without significant additional resourcing, then equality law rather than one round of protection at a time is definitely worth consideration.
Are you able, as I say, to share which jurisdictions those are referring to, referring to?
Yeah, I mean, the initial list for discussion is, and I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, the United Kingdom, Ireland, Canada, Australia, New Zealand and Hong Kong. And language was a consideration in selecting that shortlist because, again, as I've spoken about the importance of case law, one thing you don't want to do is add in the additional confusion of interpretation the whole time. But we have, we have said, when we were interviewing each of the sets of experts that we were looking to bring on board, we've said, we are more than happy to discuss this shortlist with us. If you want to recommend adding or changing any jurisdictions that will add another dimension to that, then please do. And that's a conversation we'll have in the next couple of weeks with those who come aboard.
Just pursuing this question, timescale. So by sometime in April, you should have identified which law will be the basic template, whether you might modernize it and go ahead of it. The next phase, are you going to be outsourcing work on that or are you relying on internal resources from St James's Chambers? How's it going to be taken forward from that point onwards?
Well, again, we have to be guided after we've done the phase one as to how those experts will potentially want to work. We haven't guaranteed that they'll be employed through phase two. No, but with the interview, when we interviewed people, they were interested in working with us on phase two. But the phase one piece is a piece on its own.
Any indicative timescale for stage two?
Well, what we've got here is we're saying by April that we would have chosen the jurisdiction that we feel that we can best model ourselves on. And then it is then working with, on the consultation proposals, working with the GDA, working with the public. There will be some writing of the policy. It was one of the questions that we asked during the interview stage. Would you be capable of writing a policy paper? They were all very capable of writing a policy paper. They were all very capable of writing a policy paper. We would expect, we would need some officer support around that to understand the Gernsy context.
To the States this year, do you think, or the policy, not the final legislation, but the policy in form of a year?
No, we would hope that we would have done, had the draft policy paper by the end of this year, and have had that to consultation, ready to go back to the States with the policy paper the first or second quarter of 2019.
And then after that, sorry, I ask this from bitter experience, have you had promise from Politic and Resources of any kind of legislative priority once you, once you get the law approved in principle?
Well, I've got here, and what I've been given is legal drafting by St James Chambers subject to prioritisation, and I think you touched on this earlier, I think that is dependent on the work that may come out of Brexit and other priorities. The only thing I can say is that it is one of the top twenty-three priorities in the States' Gernsy Policy and Resource Plan, so one would hope at that time that it would receive some priority.
Can I just follow up? Deputy Stevens, I mean, Deputy Yerby mentioned the possibility of an equal rights legislation. To what extent has Politic and Resources Committee been involved in this particular project in terms of legislation? And what would be your reaction from the Politic and Resources Committee to the prospect of equal rights legislation?
Oh, working backwards. I have no recollection of discussing it with my colleagues on PNR, so this is my sort of personal response, so working towards an equal society is something that is important, I think, that we, PNR espouses and also participates in, so I haven't got any issue with that. Sorry, first part of your question was?
No, to what extent have you been involved with the project, on behalf of, I assume you're representing PNR on the social policy, as part of this working group in relation to the legislation?
Well, the senior policy officer to my left has been a member of the project.
I'm on the, sorry, yes, so I'm on the project board, but, and so through the project board, this has been discussed, and also, as you know, the prioritisation of legislation comes back from the committees to PNR to then go to the States, and so the timings that Deputy Leclerc and Deputy Yerby and Ed talked about as well, fit very neatly into that, into that sort of timeframe, so yes, it would go to Politic and Resources, and then ultimately to the States.
All right. Right, before we turn to the Equality and Rights Organisation, I think, oh yes, yes, I just wanted to, we talked a bit with the previous witnesses about the medical model and the social model, I don't want to go into that in too much detail, but in terms of Jersey's position, Deputy Leclerc, Deputy Yerby, and May, what's wrong with what Jersey has done in terms of its disability discrimination?
Channel headlines tonight.
I think that's a slightly unfair question, Deputy Green, because I'm a politician in Gernsy, and I'm afraid I haven't looked in any detail at the Jersey model, so I wouldn't be able to comment.
No, that's fair enough. Deputy Yerby?
I think the concern raised by the previous witnesses, which I would echo, is if you have to prove impairment for a given period of time, so if there's a six-month cut-off before you are protected from discrimination, that is effectively, you know, you having to have the label and you having to clear the bar in a way that we would not want to, that we don't feel is effective in achieving the core purpose of discrimination, or you could be discriminated on day one of becoming disabled in that.
If we accept that as a proposition, is there not some, I mean, we talked with the other witnesses about compromise, I'm thinking proportionality within the Gernsy context, is there a view on to what extent the social model is genuinely proportionate in the Gernsy context, if that makes any sense?
I know this isn't the done thing, but could I ask you to provide me with the panel's definition of the social model?
Well, I haven't got one, that's why we're going to talk about that.
Can I, having wrestled with it, actually, there is a definition of the social model back in the original 2013 policy letter, which I think is probably the only thing we have got. I mean, my understanding is it's talking about barriers rather than...
But to some extent, I think we're talking about a question that those involved have already resolved, they're clear in their head where they're going, and so I think we should really focus on how we're going to get there now.
Well, I was just, I'm just conscious of the, of the small businessman, the small business person, small business woman, to what extent there may be implications here which are perhaps arguably, I'm not saying they are, but arguably disproportionate?
Having put the Chair of the Panel in the opposition, I'll go back to it, in the broadest possible terms, when we talk about the social model, what we mean is that the community's emphasis should be on changing environments, on changing attitudes, on changing the way that we do things, so that it is easier for disabled people to be included. Whereas when we're talking about the medical model, we are talking about understanding what is physically wrong with a person, and I say that with inverted commas, and putting the emphasis on that person to change themselves so that they can fit in with our pre-existing norms. And I don't think there is anybody in this room who would suggest that all the onus should be on the individual to change themselves to fit in with social norms. So at the heart of almost any disability law, no matter what country you look at, is this question of reasonable adjustments, and both of those words matter. Adjustments is the social model bit, it's about changing the environment, changing the way that you do things, so that people with different impairments can join in on an equal basis. But the matter of reasonableness is equally important, so an adjustment might not be reasonable if the cost of making it would put a small businessman out of business. In fact, it would not be reasonable if the cost of making it put, so it...
I think that's what I was trying to...
So the law might be expected to do things, the corner shop might not be expected to do, well, that seems fair enough to me.
That's always meant by reasonable adjustment, that is where the...
Just before we leave the law, I know time's short, and move on to the new body, I'm seem obsessed with timescales here, but you've got us as far as the second law, second quarter next year for going to the States. Earlier, we heard a real earnest wish to get the whole thing through by the end of this political term, because you're such a marvellous committee and they may not get such a good one in future. Is that something that you think is practical? Can the law could actually be implemented by the end of this term?
Personally, that's where I would like to see, because I do tend to agree with the previous panel, that the handover is not always good, I don't know if there'll be, even though I'm a member of SAC, as I am Deputy Roffe at the moment, you know, I don't know that we're planning on any huge mandate changes, but if there were mandate changes, and I heard talk about, you know, an individual disability person, States nominated, whether that will split off some of the work that we do from our mandate, I don't know. I would like to see it implemented. I think some of the questions that Deputy Green has just put, and Deputy Yerby has answered, on the social model, that even when we bring the policy paper to the States of Gernsy, that is not a slam dunk, in my view, there will be obstacles. I think we're going to go on to talk about the ERO in a moment, and depending on what type of ERO, there will be costs involved in that and resources, you know, even if some of that work is undertaken by the third sector, we know that there will still be from our work that we do on the employment tribunal, there is still officer and support staff required. So I think we have to be realistic, and some of this will also be, acceptance will be on cost as well. So it's not just the legislation, it will be the cost implications of that, and the willingness of the States to adopt what we will be recommending at that time, we have to be honest about that.
Yes, thank you. Let's move on to the Equality and Rights Organisation on that note. Deputy Leclerc or Deputy Yerby, what exactly will that body do, what exactly should that body do, in your view?
I'm going to ask Emily.
Well, if I work backwards from one of the last points made by your previous witnesses, if we are introducing a law, and particularly if it's a law in an area where public awareness is not especially well developed, where there isn't a large pre-existing body of law, what you don't want to do is just have government standing there with a stick to beat businesses with. What you want is to have a community that is already prepared to receive this law, so effectively you have the law acting as a backstop or a benchmark of best practice. And one of the key functions of an Equality and Rights Organisation is to provide the education, the support, the expertise to help the community adapt to what might be the more challenging or the less well-known elements around. So when I pitch the question to you, how do you understand the social model, I could pitch that to anybody outside of this room and be met with a wall of silence, because sometimes the language used around inclusion, equality, becomes a bit esoteric, it drifts off into, you know, academic discourse, and actually, it's about fairness, it's about tolerance, it's about being just to one another, and spelling it out in those terms, making it a non-scary and an achievable thing is at the heart of what we need an Equality Rights Organisation to achieve. But the other side of that, the other core functions that bodies like this fulfil in other jurisdictions, is to keep the government on its toes. So you are talking about something that is independent from government, you are talking about something that has a real deep understanding of human rights matters, and that is challenging us always to do the best for islanders in terms of equality, in terms of, not only the provisions that we have in place in terms of the legal framework, but also our day-to-day practices. So you asked earlier, you know, how is the States doing in terms of leading by example? And we have, at the moment, had to commission off-Ireland experts to carry out an audit and give the States some guidance there. One might hope that an Equality Rights Organisation, for example, could help the States both as policymaker and as service provider, to think through how it could be doing things better, to be more inclusive of those who are most disadvantaged.
Can I just follow up? We focused in terms of legislation on the actual discrimination or the disability legislation. Is there not going to be a separate piece of legislation for this new statutory body?
There are...
Or are you going to run the two into one piece of legislation?
I think that is a decision for a little bit further down the line when we know...
There will have to be legislation for this body.
And there is a provision under the enabling law that will allow that to be created.
Is Deputy Leclerc, is there any indication at this stage what the cost of that body might be?
What we're doing at the moment is we're working on the business plan, so we've got officer time being spent on that. We've already had a workshop, we had a workshop just before Christmas with the Third Sector, and Citizens Advice were involved, a huge range of third, it was very well attended. And I think out of that, it was formulated, bringing together the ideas of what people perceived as, themselves as an ERO, what potentially should be included, so that work is ongoing, and we will be bringing a policy paper back to the States, and that should be this year, because that needs to be, as we've said all along, before the other discrimination legislation.
Right, okay.
And so you could have the new statutory body up and running, even though you don't necessarily have the new disability legislation in place?
That's our intention, yes. Again, it's subject to bringing the paper back to the States and that being approved, and that business case has to go to PNR first of all, to understand what the costs of that will be.
Can we ask perhaps Deputy Stevens from representing PNR, I mean, do you think there is appetite within PNR to endorse such a body?
Oh, that's a difficult question.
Put you on the spot.
Let's be optimistic. In one sense, it will depend how well the case is made, because clearly every case is taking on its merits, but I would like to suggest that there is some sympathy for this project, and that has been for a long time, so, but we are somewhat in reactive mode, as, no, so, yeah.
I don't doubt you'll get sympathy, but I suspect there'll be consideration of what the price tag is as well, yeah.
As always.
But I think it's true to say that, you know, it's in our policy, our Policy and Resource Plan, in the Policy and Resource Plan, and at the time when the Policy and Resource Plan was debated at the States, that we put on case-by-case basis and the business case, when I've spoken regarding this Phase One of financial support, and we've had to do it very quickly, you know, I've had the support that we need, ESS has had the support that we need from PNR. And I think, you know, the States have made a commitment to this, and it would be disappointing if we went back on that commitment.
I think that's probably it on the ERO. Whilst, I think, Deputy Leclerc, how was the partnership between the GDA and the States, how has it been working in your experience since you've been the President of Committee for Budget and Social Security? How has that partnership worked? Has it been a success, do you think, or?
Well, yeah, well, I would say it has been a success, I think there was a sort of wake-up on our part when we had the first address at the AGM, and that would have been in 2016, and Ed will probably be able to talk a little bit more about that, and I think when we showed the plan and the amount of work streams that were involved in all of this, and I know that they're in regular attendance to the workshops, you know, various members of the GDA attending that, and we know that, you know, not all of those participants are on a paid basis, so we've really appreciated the time and the expertise that people have put into the workshops that we've held. So my understanding that it's always been a good relationship, you know, they've always been honest with us, and I think there perhaps has always been, and I think this is alluded to, when Policy Council, was it the DLG, that there is sometimes some pushback on areas, but, you know, I think that has, there has to be, we can't have a complete loving and, so, yeah, I think there's been some tension. But again, Emily and Ed are both involved in that, and maybe they would be able to expand on that as well.
Yes, so as Michelle says, when we went along to our first GDA meeting, I think after we became responsible for the strategy, I was very honest about the position that I thought we were in, knew we were in, and it had taken us a while to pull our plan of activity together. I think initially it ran to about twelve pages, over four hundred tasks we extracted that we needed to focus on, and of course, once you do that, when you get down to that level of detail, then, you know, you have to get real about the resources and the timeframes and everything else, but we felt, you know, as a committee, it was really important to be honest upfront at the start of taking over the responsibility, and I think we've been open and honest all the way through, and in terms of the GDA being part of the project board, I think that works very well. And you need challenge sometimes to get better outcomes, don't you? We all need that.
Absolutely. No, thank you. And I'm very conscious of the fact that we've not had an opportunity to ask you any questions, Ms McElwath, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Actually, could I pick up a question?
Yes, of course.
In the first session, I think it was Mr Harnish, mentioned that HSC was having to undergo a cultural change in sort of adopting a social model, and I just wonder perhaps in your role, I mean, how have you, how has HSC coped with that cultural change? Has it been difficult, has it been challenging?
I think from my experience, we're really, from an adult disability service point of view, we've always been very conscious of the social model and person-centred care. We've, Emily talked about, you know, the person rather than the service, we've been really clear up, she, ESS and Ed and I have worked on a couple of cases for people that have, we've had to be really quite creative around how we support people with a disability, so we've worked together and not done some things in silos, so I think we've, you know, from my point of view, I think that that's the way we've worked.
So you're showing that it can work, that it can work, even, you know, the culture changes is possible?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Just one final question, Deputy Leclerc perhaps, in terms of your committee's relationship with the disabled community, if I can put it like that, and indeed the GDA's relationship with the disabled community, I should have perhaps asked them this, how do you think things have gone? Do you think your committee has good relations with the disabled community? Do you think they can be improved?
Well, probably it's much more at officer level that we would have one-to-one with the disabled community, probably through some of the benefit system that we offer. I think through the GHA and the social housing side, again, we have people that come in with needs and access issues, so through that, occasionally at committee level, we might... might have a one-to-one case where some financial support is required over and above. And, you know, we get an administrator recommendation on that. But I think it's probably much more at officer level that you are dealing with people in the community.
Yeah, I think certainly on a, on a one-to-one basis, this is around some case work and things like that. But I, of course, we can improve our engagement with, with, with the community around, around these things. We, and we mustn't forget, of course, the GDA only represents a small proportion of disabled islanders as well. So of course, we can get better at that. And we have to learn from that. And I think that will come, I'm hoping that will come as, as we, we focus more on the awareness and changing attitudes piece because we've got to be engaging with people.
And indeed, that would apply to all committees as well, states.
Yes, yeah.
Have we got any other, looking at my colleagues, any other questions?
No, really. It is just a comment that I'm picking up in almost positivity about what's going on at the moment. I know this many a slip between positivity and actually getting the, the end result with, you know, we've often seen that. But, you know, I, I think that we should continue to monitor this. You know, it's obviously going to be quite fast moving over the next couple of years. And almost every six months, we should be expecting an update on where we are, I think.
And I know, I'd just like to say, I know that sometimes, and I know that certain deputies are reluctant about consultants and experts. But I think what we try to do, we try to do it ourselves with, there were no real resources that came across, and there was no real handover because there was that gap. And, and there was no officer, one officer when it was under Policy Council, because as Emily said, it was her previously, and then the other incumbent left. So we had to pick up the pieces and it's taken us time. But we did, we have realised that we have to have the external help on this. And I think, you know, that's where we've been really fortunate in having top experts on it, particularly in this first phase.
I meant to ask that question before, I think you've answered it, but there was no possibility of using any on-Ireland resources. You had to go to the University of Ireland Galway to get, to get that level of expertise on what you wanted to do?
I believe so. I mean, we have some staff working on it. And as I say, we've had to take them off of other, other projects to work on this. But the level of expertise, the great thing is that they will be working with our officers. So our officers will be learning, particularly in these next six to eight weeks, we'll be pulling that phase one together. So they won't be working in isolation. They will be working as part of a team within ESS.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, we should say that there will be a handstand transcript of this hearing, and we will probably be taking one or two weeks just to give thought to what we've put out, we'll produce a written summary of what we think we've learned today in a week or two. But thank you very much.